Recording.
All right, great. I'd like to call the order. The November 10th, 2020 Bridgewater Town Council Meeting would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands.
It stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. I do have some condolences. Um, first condolence I'd like to pass along is to the family of Stephen Vesari.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Do you want to just read the disclaimer about the meeting?
I should do it after this, but okay.
Okay, my bad.
Uh, yeah, let me, let me do this and then I'll read the disclaimer. Um, upon his passing on November 4th, 2020, Mr. Vesari served in the United States Marine Corps Reserve during the Gulf War. Also like to pass on the condolences to the family of Ronald Mazzelli. Upon his passing on the October 23rd, 2020, Mr. Mazzelli served aboard the USS Newport News, CA 148, in the United States Navy during the Vietnam War. I'd also like to pass on our condolences to the family of Eugene Franciosi. Upon his passing on October 23rd, 2020, Mr. Franciosi served in Headquarters Medical Company, 39th Infantry, Regiment 9, 9th Infantry Division, 8th Army, United States Army, in the Republic of Germany during the Korean War. I'd also like to ask anyone, if anyone has any other veterans or first responders, can have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law C 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune in to the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. Okay, first order on the agenda is I'll entertain a move, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 20th, 20th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move the second. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
I'll abstain from not being present.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against?
Okay, I do not have any announcements. We do not have any proclamations. Moving to citizens' open forum. If there are any citizens that would like to speak, please let us know. I asked that you keep it to three minutes and as we do with citizens' open forum, we just ask for citizens to understand that we do not go back and forth, but would love to hear from you. So is there anyone who would like to speak during citizens' open forum? I don't see anyone. Anne, do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. Uh, we do not have any appointments. It is according to AT&amp;T 705. Um, so we have under hearings, petition P 2020 019 will be alteration of premise to Class II Auto Deal License, 39 Auto Sales, Inc., 9994 Bedwitt Street. I'm going to reopen the meeting. The petitioner has asked that we continue it, so I will entertain a motion to continue until the next meeting.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
To Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
So we're a little bit ahead. Um, I'll entertain a motion to take item G out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Okay, do you not have any licensed transactions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take item H out of order.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is a second. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
I'll entertain a motion to take item J out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Discussion. Um, this is fine, but I'm looking at the, the timetable of all the other hearings and I'm wondering if we shouldn't just take the town manager's report because he's going to take a few minutes and they'll consume most of the 10 minutes that we need for all the other hearings.
Well, let's, let's go through this first, Mr. Wood, and then I'll entertain a motion to take item I out of order. Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to take item I out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Requires a roll call vote.
I'm taking a little.
Um, Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, one against.
Okay, Mr. Dutton, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to be voted up, so, um, a short, a very short update on the Mitchell School. Again, I really don't have a whole lot. The process is continuing. Currently, the sub and general bids are out. And just so the council knows, all subcontractors and all general contractors were pre-qualified. So we know now what that potential, well, we know what the potential pool of bidders is. And, and I am told, as I may have mentioned before, I'm told that that's a good, a good list of potential bidders. So we would do well with any of them. So now we, we wait to see who submits the most competitive price and, and then we move forward. So the next meeting of the Mitchell School Building Committee is December 7th at 5:30. That's an important meeting that will review the bids that have come in and likely approve the award of a contract. So that, again, is December 7th at 5:30 to review the bids and potentially award for construction. Construction's still on target to begin, or at least the contract to award that construction work is scheduled for December, and we're still working on a July 2022 completion date. As I mentioned, the next meeting is December 7th, 5:30 PM. And any information is at Bridgewater, Bridgewater School Project dot com. So again, BridgewaterSchoolProject.com. Hopefully, anticipating Counselor Fitzgibbons' question, we are on time and so far on budget. A lot will be revealed on December 7th. So that's where we stand on the Mitchell School.
Mr. President?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
And I believe last time you said we're pretty much done with state deadlines. Mr. Dutton, is that still true? And now we just keep moving forward, right?
That, that is correct. The state stays involved throughout the construction process. They do come and do periodic inspections, but in terms of deadlines that we have to meet for submissions, correct, we are, we are finished with that.
Mr. Wood?
Um, I have an off-the-wall question that was brought to me by a father of a former student. Somewhere out there, there's time capsule. I, I think it may be in the parking lot area, the old Mitchell. I'm wondering if they found that or if you need locations to find it.
Uh, there, I know there was a tree that was protected, that was planted in memory of a former student. I know that there's also some sort of construction commemorative plaque that's mounted on stone, sort of on the driveway end, but I'm not, not aware of a specific time capsule. So if there's more information on that, if you give it to me, I'll be happy to pass that along.
Sure. I, I, my kids weren't there when it happened, so I'll call back to father and find if they have a word of a location for you.
Perfect, perfect.
Any other questions on the Mitchell School update? Mr. Dutton, just, this is just out of curiosity. Do we have a sense for the bidders? Are they, are they local companies? Are they a mix of local and out of state? Any idea?
Um, I don't, I don't know about location. I do know that there are some larger companies that do what is reported to me to be very good work. And we are, at least the OPM and the, and the designer were a little bit surprised that some of these larger companies were, were bidding on the, or potentially bidding on the school, because they usually do larger projects than this one. So, so I, they, they took that as a good sign. So, so I leave it at that. But my guess is if, if there were out of state companies that were qualified to do work in Massachusetts, they would probably be either Rhode Island, excuse me, Rhode Island or possibly Connecticut companies. But, but I suspect that the majority are Massachusetts companies.
Great, thank you. Okay, COVID-19. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mrs. Loesch, go right ahead.
Um, Mr. Dutton, as we have been talking about diversity in the town, it would love to ensure that we have some diverse suppliers for, for any of the work that we can, as we've been out. So just wanted to see if there's going to be metrics on that. And if not, can we start metrics to see how our supply diversity would be for the building?
There, there are very specific metrics for diversity that, that are included in the bid documents. So.
Okay, perfect.
So potential bidders are required to meet those or, or encouraged to meet those and improve their rankings accordingly if they can meet them.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to COVID-19 update.
Thank you, COVID, COVID-19. So after we saw a little bit of a spike several weeks ago, we're sort of holding steady at roughly 10 to, eight to 10 new cases per week. BSU, as you know, does all kinds of testing on all their students, I believe, every, every two weeks. And, and they are doing pretty well at this point. And the DOC is also under control in addition to BSU. So current average daily incidence rates, which is published by the state, the DPH, is 10.9. That now puts us in yellow. Last meeting, I believe, we had just moved into red, so we stayed there for two weeks and now we're back into the yellow. And just by contrast, to give you an idea, Brock, so we're at 10.9 daily incidence rate, and that's on a per 100,000 basis. Brockton is 24.1, East Bridgewater is 10, Rainham's 9.910, and West Bridgewater is 11.8. So, so we're right in the mix. The outlier, obviously, being, being Brockton, which is currently in the red and has been in the red for a number of weeks now. As you know, we have opened Town Hall. It is publicly accessible, but I do offer a word of caution or a word of, of warning there. We're juggling a whole assortment of different staff accommodations and certainly a number of quarantines and isolations. And that limits or can limit the number of staff in the building. So in the event that there is, what I've asked the department heads is to make sure that the office is open, at least somebody is in the office. But I do ask for patience because I know there's, there will be situations when, when a particular office does need to be closed for, for reasons outside of obviously all our control. So, so I do ask for some public patience there. And obviously, anybody can continue to do their business over the phone, the internet, otherwise electronically. But you're certainly welcome to come in at this point. We do take your name and number for contact tracing purposes. But if you have something that absolutely has, has to take place in person in the Academy Building, you're welcome, welcome to do that. So, so that really is all I have on, on the COVID update. I know, we were talking a little bit earlier about this meeting is virtual and we're sorting out and Attorney Rollins is, is also sorting out some of the confusion over the governor's last orders about, you know, curfews and so forth. So I trust we'll be back in the Academy Building next meeting for those that want to be there. But, but for this one, we caution was, was in order. So that's, that's about all I have on the, on the COVID.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, seeing none. Rainbow's Edge ground test results.
Rainbow's End, as the council knows, we have obviously done testing. Prime Engineering has finally gotten in to do testing. They have uncovered, actually, let's see if I can share the screen. They've uncovered particularly high concentrations of arsenic in certain areas. Let's see. I'm going to share my screen here. Just a moment. So hopefully, what you will see. Now, let's see. All right. Is that visible to everyone? The overhead? Or the over, the?
Yeah, we can see the window screen.
The grid syst-, oh, oh, that's interesting.
You had the grid up and you missed and went away.
Oh, that's, the computer is telling me. Okay, we're good. Okay, so what happens is when they come in to do testing, they divide up the, the whole area into a grid system. Obviously, it's labeled A1 through, whatever, the last, and 12, I guess. And then test within each of those grids. What, what you see, the green highlighted areas are where extra, very high concentrations were found. They continue to do testing now as outside of this, this sort of main perimeter. But so far, this is where the, the most concentrated areas of arsenic are. The orange roughly outlines where a fence will be installed beginning tomorrow and can probably continuing to Thursday. But that is, so that's, that's essentially where we are now. The threshold for reporting, of doing any reporting is 20 parts per million of arsenic. The threshold for reporting within two hours, there's a certain provision in the DEP regulations that requires reporting within two hours of, of test results. And that threshold is 40 parts per million. And in a couple of areas, we've got two, over 200 parts per million. But I do caution, again, it's very early, you know, that they're still out there testing. They're still back in the lab testing. So it's, it's, it's a bit early to be drawing any conclusions about what kind of remediation is necessary, what this means more long-term about the use of that property. So, so that's still, still a lot of, there are still a lot of unknowns there. So I can tell you that Mass DEP has issued a release tracking number, which is associated with, with known releases. And we get these reports on a frequent basis when we, where there's an oil spill, for example. In this case, it happens to be a dangerous hazardous substance of arsenic, but, but we get similar tracking release notification when somebody releases oil or, or fuel or what have you. So they have listed this in DEP lingo as an immediate response action area, which sort of really designates it and qualifies it for, for more immediate response. But again, Prime Engineering is, is performing additional screenings and soil samples. We have taped off roughly where the fence is going to go. So there's yellow tape out there as of either yesterday and this morning. But that yellow tape will obviously be replaced by the fence. And once, again, once all the testing is complete, the report is sent to the town and the DEP, and we'll have a discussion at that point about what DEP remediation orders will be. And I can tell you, the DOC has been very, very easy to work with. They have offered their work in terms of doing remediation on the site. So quite optimistic that between DOC, the DEP, our engineers, and certainly our, our own folks will, will get a very good handle on this in the, in the very short, not too distant future. So that just gives you a brief update where we are, but happy to answer questions on this somewhat complex topic.
Can you bring us back to the full screen, Mr. Dunn?
Hmm.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Uh, do we have an estimate of the town's liability on this?
Uh, again, too early. And, and I have mentioned this before, but there is a very unclear, it's quite unclear, you know, what the town's role is in this in the first place. Obviously, if there is an area with arsenic, high concentrations of arsenic in our town, we're going to be quite active in, in trying to remediate that and we're going to stay on top of it. We don't own this property. There's a question as to whether it's controlled by Bridgewater Youth Soccer, which is obviously the, has a lease over this land or a license issued by the DOC to the town, which sort of directly conflicts with the lease to Bridgewater Youth Soccer. So there's, there's a little bit of confusion there. But quite honestly, I think the DOC is not, the DOC is not particularly concerned about that. I think, I think they're just interested in helping remediate the issue that's out there.
Right. And so then you touched on another question that I had. Is there any? I'll withdraw and rephrase. What's the level of risk to the soccer fields that abut it? We have kids there every day.
Correct. I'm told by the engineers that, that one of the fortunate things here is that, that the arsenic will stay in the soil and, and doesn't necessarily migrate outside of, of that orange fenced area that I showed you prior. So there, there appears to be limited risk unless people go in there and get it on their shoes and track it all over the place, which the engineer said is really the biggest risk. We don't want people in there tracking it on their, on their shoes and, and dragging it out of there, hence, hence the temporary fence.
Thank you. And then that goes to my next question of anyone who may have been on well water or anything like that in the area. I would again assume it doesn't move, so their water ought to be fine?
It ought to be fine, and, and that's going to be the subject of, of more conversation with the engineers over the course of the balance of this week.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to make sure that we, make sure that we comply with every DEP request of us and certainly any notifications to the area, to the neighbors.
Yeah, comply, complying with the rules and doing the right thing are sometimes different. So let's make sure we do the right thing.
True.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Columbotus?
Um, I guess I'm unclear. So we as a town are liable for cleaning this up because it's within the, who's on the hook, I guess, is the question for, uh, how will that be determined?
I'd say it's premature. You know, I, I think at this point, our first, our first course of action is to find out exactly what we're dealing with, what's there. You know, it's within our town. We want, we have an interest in making sure we know what's there, but.
Yeah, protect themselves first.
Right, exactly. I think after that, we can figure out how this is going to get remediated. Again, I'm, I'm very optimistic by some of the conversations I've had with the DOC, you know, very willing to, to, you know, step up and, and take the lead on remediation efforts. So my hope is that, that they can do that. Obviously, they, they can avail themselves of state money. They also have a better relationship or, or a more peer-to-peer relationship with DEP as well. So I think, I think between all the parties involved, we'll have a lot of discussions about sharing the cost and how that gets allocated, right?
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's any other items, I should say, if there are any items that you would like Mr. Dutton to include in his report, let him know, and we'll put that on the next agenda. Okay, the time is 7:27. I'd like to open the meeting for Order OFY 21-021, General Fund Free Cash Allocation to Trust Funds. At their meeting held on October 26, 2020, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3-0 to recommend this measure. The Finance, Finance Committee met on 11/9/2020. The disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure has been duly advertised for a public hearing and may be finally considered this evening at the conclusion of the hearing pending a Finance Committee disposition. My understanding is the Finance Committee did approve this. Am I correct, Anne?
Yes, that's correct. All the financial items were approved by Finance Committee.
Okay, great. Um, so, Mr. Dutton, you're the petitioner. Would you like to speak to this?
Uh, no, other than to simply explain for those that may be watching, each year we take our General Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, also known as Free Cash, and we allocate it according to a policy that was set forth and voted by the council some time ago. In this case, we have allocated more to the, to the Stabilization Fund. We've allocated exactly what we removed from the Stabilization Fund in order to balance the FY 21 budget, because we do anticipate having to tap into the Stabilization Fund for the FY 22 budget. So we want to make sure that we've got money returned to it in order to fund that allocation for 2022.
Okay. Is there any general questions from the public? Anne, I don't see anyone. Do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is there one, anyone from the public speaking in favor? Okay, I don't see anyone. Is there any, anyone from the public speaking in opposition?
Mr. President, I, I don't know if you can see this, but it looks like Buddy Anthony has his hand up. I don't know if that's, he wants to speak or not.
I did. I did not see it, but Buddy Anthony, would you like to speak? You're on mute.
He unmute himself.
I don't see his hand raised.
Now it's now it's gone. It was up earlier.
Okay. Already, is there any questions from the town council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
So Mr. Dunn, could you, in general, just so we hear it again, talk about your philosophy, quote unquote, the town council's philosophy slash orders of budgeting around actually trying to generate free cash from revenue we're bringing in in the current year?
Sure, on a on a regular basis, the council votes a a budget resolution at the beginning of the budgeting process, and I think that's coming up for first reading your meeting tonight. Over the last number of years, I'd say four or five years, we've actually asked the council to to budget or ask the council to ask us to budget an amount that will result in some percentage of of free cash. So that's was quite by design, recognizing that that we don't have a separate capital budget on a year to year basis. We rely on on our free cash to fund capital purchases. We rely on our free cash to add funds to stabilization, obviously free cash for O P E B stabilization. And in this case, the the Employee Liability Trust Fund, which funds the accrued sick time buybacks that we're obligated to pay according to to a number of the the collective bargaining agreements. So 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 in there, there is, it's not just free cash, which is unfortunate that that's what we call it, but it is money that that we purposely try to build into the budget and project that we will have left over at the end of the year in order for that to flow into these various funds in order to make per capital purchases, you know, fund buybacks, fund stabilization, O P E B stabilization and so forth.
And what would be, what would be the, what would be the drawback of instead setting up a budget that would just say, okay?
What I'd like to keep this to is to the actual order. Just I'll let you finish the question, but I think we're going into kind of philosophical. I'd like to keep it to the order. Okay, any other questions for the town manager? All right. Closing the hearing at seven thirty three, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And we got a movement, got a second. Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Mr. Colm Bodis?
Yeah.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Okay. All right. Time is seven thirty four. Moving on to order O F Y twenty one dash, oh, I'm sorry, take that back. Order F Y twenty one dash zero two one transfer order police department capital items. At their meeting held on October twenty six, twenty twenty, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three oh to recommend this measure. The finance committee will meet on November ninth twenty twenty. The disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure has been duly advertised for a public hearing and may be finally considered this evening at the conclusion of the hearing pending a finance committee disposition according to this home the that was voted to approve. So I will ask Mr. Dutton, as he's the petitioner, if he has anything to add.
I would only add, Mr. President, that the thank Bristol Plymouth Tech School, who has done most of the work to to create and build the the outbuilding there. They, when they were shut down in March, we had to make other arrangements for folks to come in and tighten up that building. And we continue to have some slight small expenses there. So that's that's the bulk of of this this request.
Okay. Are there any general questions from the public? And I don't see any, do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is anyone from the public speaking in favor? I love my iPad, but I got to admit, having a full screen on a PC is good. Okay, Anne, I don't see anyone. Do you?
Not.
Okay, anyone from the public speaking in opposition? I do not see anyone. Do you, Anne?
No.
Okay, any questions from the town councillors? Mr. Colm Bodis?
Um, Mr. President, I just have a question to the town manager. So when what is there, what is the permitting permitting process like when a town builds buildings on its own land? Do we go through the building department and as any other applicant would or or and our fees waived? Do we, for the fees waived for this project?
Yes, I mean, it's yeah, we're we do waive the fees for a town project because it's a town project. But otherwise, we go through the same permitting process and are held to the same inspection schedules as other other buildings would be.
We know we have some solid buildings there.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So so it sounds like the the amount for the building was just to tighten it up, but not to complete it. Is that right? And if so, what do you anticipate this being expanded later?
I don't, I don't, I do not anticipate any more funds being used for that building. I think this this brings it would bring it through completion.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the meeting at seven thirty seven. I want to hand a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
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 Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to the next item. It is now seven thirty eight. Order O F Y twenty one dash zero two two transfer order, senior center capital transfer. At their meeting held on October twenty six, twenty twenty, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three oh to recommend this measure. The finance committee met on November ninth, twenty twenty, their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be duly advertised. This, excuse me, this measure has been duly advertised for a public hearing and may be finally considered this evening at the conclusion of the hearing pending a finance committee disposition. Again, this has been approved by the finance committee. Mr. Dutton, as the petitioner, would you like to add anything to this?
Very little, only to thank our Elder Affairs Director Emily Williams for scrambling to to get a twenty thousand dollar state grant. This is the amount remaining to pay for the work that was not paid for directly by the grant of twenty thousand.
Thank you. Is there any general questions from the public? Anne, I don't see anyone. Do you?
No.
Okay. Is there from the public speaking in favor? I don't see anyone. Anne, do you?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition? I don't see anyone. Anne, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, any questions from the town council? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing at seven forty. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Good.
Okay, move second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Nine in favor, none against.
Okay. Time is now seven forty one. We'll start order O F Y twenty one dash zero twenty three transfer order capital complete streets engineer. At their meeting held on October twenty six, twenty twenty, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three oh to recommend this measure. The finance committee met November ninth, twenty twenty, their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be, has been, I don't know why I keep saying that wrong, has been duly advertised for a public hearing and may finally be considered this evening at the conclusion of the hearing pending a finance committee disposition. Finance committee voted to approve. Mr. Dutton, as the petitioner, do you have anything to add?
I would only add that that this is work done by our Complete Streets consultant, Green Green International Engineering. And I may have mentioned the last meeting that we've secured a four hundred thousand dollar capital grant to make cross, street crossing improvements and crosswalk improvements on Broad Street and Main Street as a result of the work that they have done.
Thank you. Is there, are there any general questions from the public? Anne, I don't see anyone. Do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public speaking in favor? Don't see anyone. Anne, do you?
No.
Okay, is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition? I don't see anyone. Do you?
No.
Okay, are there any questions from the town council? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. So so the work that this engineer will do for the eighty nine fifty five to complete that, does that, does that outcome result in like drawings or recommendations or what do we, what do we getting for the for the nine thousand dollars?
That gets us engineered, final engineered hundred percent plans for the street improvements throughout throughout Broad Street and Main Street. So final engineered plans with which we can use to bid and construct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll close the hair at seven forty four. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Colm Bodis?
I'll refer you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, where might I'm kind of in the dark about what process, what's gone on with our Complete Streets program is how might citizens or or the council get that information as to what what the outcomes have been so far and what the process has been.
You can certainly reach out to any, to Jennifer Burke or or me. We're happy to to explain it. A number of years ago, we created a prioritization plan and and we submitted a grant request at that point, looking, I believe, for about six hundred thousand dollars. We failed in that effort. We tried to reprioritize that list, you know, based on some council, some of the council comments and some of the the shifting priorities. We are not permitted to do that. Once that priority list is established, that's that's a fixed list. So we asked Green International to develop a proposal to fund. I think I, it was the third or fourth item on our priority priority list. And that that's what that's what you see in front of you tonight. But but certainly, we can I believe that list is on on the website, the priorities list under under Complete Streets, so you can search it. But certainly, anybody that wants more information can reach out to us.
Right. So the Complete Streets is a program, it's a state program where we comply with certain we provide this, we create this priority list, and we get a handle on how we want to be able to use the streets for more multiple modes of transportation, right?
Correct, it's absolutely.
Right. And this is one step where we get drawings and hopefully we'll get grants to do the actual work.
We know we will get a grant on this one. As I say, create those pedestrian crossings, make the the crossing improvements to the to the curbs, the accessibility improvements, and also create bike lanes on on Main Street. So those are the major areas.
Right. So this nine hundred, this nine thousand dollars is the town's, you know, buy into a a program where we'll get multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of money from the state. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Susa?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Bodis?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to item K, committee reports. Are there any committees that would like to make a report? Mrs. Loesch?
Yes, just giving a quick update that the council has completed their assessment on the town manager's review. So we'll be setting up a meeting in the next week or so to discuss next steps, but just wanted to thank you all for submitting those pieces and we'll be able to keep on track for the schedule. Just wanted to give a quick update.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to legislation for action. Order O F Y twenty one dash zero one nine acceptance of grant Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID nineteen response grant. The Budget and Finance Committee both voted three to oh to recommend this measure at their meeting held on September twenty first, twenty twenty. The finance finance committee met on October nineteen, twenty twenty, their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted this evening, pending a disposition from the finance committee. Again, finance committee approved this, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colm Bodis?
Yeah.
Mr. Susa?
The dog agrees.
Full heartedly.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
I think, Mr. Susa, you said yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor.
Okay, moving on to item N, old business. Ordinance D F Y twenty one dash zero zero three zoning ordinance zoning map zoning map amendment Pleasant Street. A duly advertised joint public hearing was held by the Community and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Community and Economic Development Committee voted three oh to recommend approval with proposed amendments. The Planning Board voted not to recommend approval as written, however, would support the measure with the proposed amendments by the committee, excuse me, Community and Economic Development Committee. This measure may not be finally voted this evening as further advertising is required pending the adoption of any amendments. So I entertain a motion to approve the amendment.
For discussion, I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
Okay. All right. Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I'd like to defer to Mr. Columbotus.
Mr. Columbotus.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, um, in reviewing some of the map that supports the amendment, we, the Chair of the Planning Board and I realized that perhaps it does not give enough protection to the residential area to the southeast of Pleasant Street, on Old Pleasant Street. And so we would suggest that we postpone consideration of this ordinance until the next meeting of the town council so we can clarify the map.
Motion, Mr. Columbotus?
Yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a second to postpone any discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Wood.
So, so the amendment, I'm a little bit confused by that because the amendment that we talked about in the joint meeting was that spot that touches Old Pleasant Street and off of 84-43. And the intention was to leave the connecting parcel to the street as, as it is and just change the restriction. So I'm completely unaware of any other conversation outside of that meeting. So I'm not sure why we're postponing it. Because I'm not aware of another joint meeting that we're going to have with the Planning Board in discussions. So maybe we can get some more information about that.
Right. It was, it was not a formal discussion. It was a off the record conversation between the Chair of the Planning Board and me. And so you could consider this a personal plea for me to, I suggest that, that we overlook protection of these other parcels. Why that parcel? You know, that, that, as it stands now, there's a 350-foot buffer from the frontage of those businesses along Pleasant Street to the rear. And so that affords adjoining residential neighborhoods protection from business activities. We don't have that. We don't, we have no dimensions. We have no such delineation really on this map. And if you were to look at the existing map, it does afford that, explicitly affords that buffer, that 350-foot buffer for adjoining residential neighborhoods. So this is not, I mean, I certainly support the, the mission of this article. I think we should just need to tighten it up a little bit. I think it's important when considering major zoning changes to not consider just the, the good outcomes, but to, to make sure that we don't allow for any unforeseen consequences that would have, you know, a detrimental effect on, on butters and residential neighborhoods. So that's my personal recommendation that we postpone consideration till the next meeting.
So once again, sorry, so the, you know, the committee from the, from the council voted 3, 3-0 in favor of accepting this and the Planning Board, and I'll ask the town attorney outside this meeting about how their vote went. But they basically said that they had to not approve it unless the, unless the amendment was, was made and they were in favor of that. I think the language was awkward, but the net effect of that was they were in favor of changing the zoning for all the other parcels to business as long as the lake there touching Old Pleasant Street was, was left alone. So the economic director, Jen Burke, was in that meeting too, and we walked through the whole process. So I'm confused why we would go back, because if we're going to go back, then we're going to go back from this very beginning and start all over again with new maps, new recommendations, new ordinance and, and a joint meeting again. That's my position.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yeah, um, I, I usually rely on Mr. Columbotus for all my zoning knowledge because he's so good at it. And I, I, it's an area that I haven't gotten very good at even after all these years. So what I, what I consider as to why we may want to hold it off and make sure we have the right amendment on this, because I believe there should be an amendment, is to make sure that everyone's treated fairly. We've got, we've got people here living obviously on Old Pleasant Street who never thought that there'd be an access way onto Old Pleasant for commercial activity or whatever. But we have an owner of parcel 8443, and if we're dividing up that owner's land into, you can do this here, you can't do that there, I'm not sure that's fair to the owner. I, I understand the intent of the Community and Economic Development Committee's amendment and I appreciate it. I'd just like to see some more thought put into it. And as Mr. Wood said, yeah, maybe go back and just relook at it and say, okay, this is what we really want to do. And maybe it's to take 8443 out of the whole equation. I don't know. But it certainly, I would look to Ms. Burke to be the expert on that and tell us what's the best answer, given all of the competing priorities. And, and I didn't hear that she suggested any changes, that this came from a committee of the council. And I've been on committees of the council who've made mistakes before, believe it or not. And so I'd just like to take a few more days, it's not urgent that we do this, and get it right rather than push it through. Thank you.
And if I can just interject just on the procedure, so if you all do decide to continue it, and there is obviously not amongst a quorum, but there is further discussion outside of the meeting that would end up with an amendment to what has gone through the zoning process as it is. I know we've been through this exercise a few times. If it is a significant, significant or substantial amendment, we obviously have to go back through the process. So I just want to make sure whatever comes back to us, there's enough of an indication on what's going to be amended so that we can discern if we have to go back through the process as you do when you substantially amend something like this. So that, that's just a heads up to you all when you're working on it for the next meeting. Just if we can make sure that we have some sort of chart or something that I can easily refer to to show the, the amount of amendment or change, right, from, from what the hearing in front of the Planning Board and you all have been.
So, Mr. Roll, just so I'm clear as well, so if we do vote, if we do vote to bring this up at our next meeting, and there are changes, amendments to the zoning, to what Mr. Columbotus is referring to, you would have the opportunity before the meeting to review it. Once it came up, you would be able to give guidance in regards to, can we move forward as is or if we have to go back to the beginning of the process? Am I correct on that?
Exactly. Yeah, I just, I think it would just make a lot of sense for, for ease of your meeting, frankly, for me to have an advance, maybe what had gone before the Planning Board and you all before and what was going to come by way of amendment, whatever that will be, that, you know, that's obviously up to you guys. So that I can then weigh in on whether or not it needs to go back through the process. As you all know, with zoning, when we change or amend the zoning at this stage, depending on the significance of that change, we may or may not have to go back through the process. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I am going to, I'll make this statement. So I think, Mr. Wood, to what you're alluding to, none of us want to add any additional work to any committee, any department that is, is working on things of this nature. But I also have to agree with Mr. Fitzgibbons that in this particular case where it does impact potentially, impact residents, people that have been there for a long time, I think out of, in my opinion, abundance of caution to hold this off until our next meeting would be time well spent. That, that's my opinion. Is there any other additional discussion?
So if I, if I could.
Yep.
So you have to be aware of the conversation that happened at that meeting. So there was discussion by the Chair of the Planning Board to say that maybe 40, you know, 8443 should be split and that leg be made residential as it is now. And I think, you know, someone else can correct me, but I believe the whole block there is commercial with commercial touching the road. Pat said that it couldn't be built on for other reasons, but right now it's, it's commercial all the way out to Old Pleasant Street. So zoning was going to change that to business, business oriented. And that's when the, you know, the problem was highlighted. And the, you know, I thought it was good, you know, a good discussion around that whole parcel. So I, I'm not saying that it's, it's definitely not saying it's overworked by the, by the committees. I think that the resolution needs to go back through the committee when, when the language by the economic director is figured out as to what the proper language for this, this change is. And then it's reintroduced as a, as a new ordinance zoning change. It goes through the process again to ensure that the two committees have ample time to, to review it, vet it, and discuss it. Thanks.
Hi, I don't know if my electronic hand got put down, but I just had a comment.
Ms. Loesch, go right ahead.
Thank you. Just by way of procedure and behavior of the council, we always tend to get to the 10-yard line, to use a football reference, if that makes sense. And I don't even know if that's true, to then have to go back to the other side of the field to start over again because of a nuance that wasn't taken into consideration in the beginning of the process. So while I'm all aligned for ensuring that things are correct, we've had 90 yards to do that, and here we are again, having to go backwards. So I wasn't privy to the sidebar conversation. I wasn't at the Planning Board meeting. But what needs to happen in these steps is that things are correct and we're having these conversations. The department heads and town leaders are open to us all the time. And so for us to get to 8:02 on 11:20, right before a vote, to, to be doing this is, is, is not a good use of anyone's time, to be quite frank. So just want to make sure as we continue to go forward and we're really being cautious and, and, you know, doing what's best for the town citizens, which is always my goal, which is why I'm here, that we do what's right for the town by doing our homework and doing things in order in a way that we're not always getting to this point of having to rework everything. So looking forward to postponing this, if this is going to be able to get us to a solution sooner.
Mr. President, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Chase.
Thank you. I did attend and participate in the joint meeting as well. And I felt quite confident at the conclusion of the meeting that we had given ample consideration to the matter of the residents of Old Pleasant Street and that the proposed amendment that is before the council this evening embodied that necessary change as we felt to protect the interests of those residents. I wasn't aware of any further discussion. And I guess I'm just confused as to why the amendment then actually came before us tonight if, in fact, it was not to be voted upon by the full council.
Well, my understanding, Mr. Chase, is until we had Mr. Columbotus speak up, it was in front of us to, to move forward. Mr. Columbotus, any, anything to add to that?
Well, first I want to respond to Ms. Loesch's metaphor about the football field. It's not as though the process, you know, consisted of a 90-yard trudge up the field with a solid ground game. And, you know, 20 minutes on this, you know, from the moment it was introduced to council till the end of that Planning Board meeting was a half hour of discussion. So there hasn't been a huge investment that will be squandered if we don't, if we take a second to look, take a second look at this. So first I wanted to make that clear. To Mr. Wood's point, I think we can't forget the, the possibility that, you know, any changes we make now will have, will be in, you know, in force for a long time and can, you know, profoundly affect, you know, most families, you know, principal investment and quality of life. So I think there's no harm in waiting two weeks to bring this back. I'm well aware of Mr. of Town Council's concern that we, we don't make, you know, if we make certain changes that we'll need to, you know, go through and step back and re-publicize it. But I think it's worth doing this, you know, this is not emergent. This has been, you know, this land has been industrial for, you know, a long time and, and I think the process can wait two weeks to make sure that we haven't opened ourselves up to any unwelcome consequences. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Dutton, can you bring it back up to a full screen? I'm assuming you've got control.
Yes, I do. And if I could, Mr. President, I do do two things. I would encourage the council, if, if it's your inclination to not send this to advertising tonight, I would certainly appreciate sending this particular order back to committee for, for further consideration instead of starting the whole process over again. So I would encourage that. And Ms. Burke is here at the meeting, and so I, I would defer to her if, if it pleases the council, just to give you a little bit of background and update on it, so you all have a little bit of history here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. I just want to be, if I could get clarification from Mr. Columbotus. The amendment that you're, you've talked about that has been approved by the Community and Economic Development Committee then?
Right. That was our amendment. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify, because I thought, I thought Counselor Wood said that he was not aware of the discussion about the amendment. So I just want to make sure that the way it's written, the, the committee voted for that, just the planning, the Planning Board hadn't yet.
Well, that process doesn't allow them to make a recommendation.
Right, right. Okay.
Mr. George, I'll make the motion to move it back to Planning Board, to a joint, joint Planning Board and Economic Development Committee meeting. Second.
All right. So we have a motion to send back to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Any discussion in a second? Yes.
I'll take discussion here.
Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
We have, we have a motion for Mr. Columbotus in a second. I'm not sure that Mr. Wood's motion overrules that. So should we dispose of Mr. Columbotus's motion first? And I'll defer to him on what he wants to do with it. But I think procedurally, we need to dispose of that and then move on to any other thing. Because right now, if I'm keeping track correctly, we've had a motion to approve as written, and then we had another motion by Mr. Columbotus to hold for two more weeks. So we're not even on the, any amendment yet. We're, we're just discussing about holding for two more weeks.
So a motion, a motion to amend would have to be voted on before a motion to continue to adate certain. So if, if there is no motion to amend, then.
I made a motion to approve. And it was seconded. Mr. Columbotus, if I, if I remember right, and I'll defer to Ms. Holmberg, because she's the arbiter of all truth here in the, in the meeting. Mr. Columbotus then made a motion just to continue it for two more weeks. There's been no motion to amend yet because we're just, the, the goal, I believe, that Mr. Columbotus was trying to do was just to continue it for two more weeks and perhaps write a better amendment or do something else. I don't know. I like Mr. Wood's suggestion. Maybe we just send it back to the Community and Economic Development and the Planning Board to talk about it again. But let's do it in the right order. That's all I'm saying.
Correct. I will withdraw my motion.
And I'll withdraw my second to that.
Okay, so now we're on, I'm sorry.
Can I just add in a few? I have not had a chance to speak, Mr. President, in one of the sponsors, the original proposal.
Go ahead, Mr. Rushton.
Thank you, sir. Just to begin with, going back, there's a number of fantastic points that have been made by the councils that have been involved in this. This started out with simple rezoning of Lot 7120 on the corner of Elm and. This started out with simple rezoning of lot 7120 on the corner of Elm and Pleasant Street. That then transferred into us rezoning, anything that wasn't properly zoned, out to 24. That then resulted in another meeting where we're now having this discussion over lot 8443. I haven't heard in any of the meetings, which I also participated in, although I had to leave early in the last meeting. I participated in the conversation that, you know, all of this seems that everybody is on board. So I'm failing to understand the reason to, to reset this and go back for anything. I'm just trying to figure that out. My only concern in the process and, and everything that has changed is to the actual landowner at 8443. And I'd like to hear from Jennifer, what is the impact on that particular landowner with having split zoning on their lot? So the last meeting, we were concerned about residents on Old Pleasant Street and how it impacted them in a residential community. But the only person that may or may not be aware, I don't know that unless Jennifer could speak to maybe the town manager, is the owner of 8443. In my opinion, if that owner is not aware of split zoning on their particular lot, then yes, I think that we should go back and there should be a discussion with that landowner. I mean, how does the landowner get notified by the town that we've split their lot and zoning? And with, and with that, I appreciate the opportunity to just speak on that.
So Mr. Dutton, I'll turn it to you, or if Ms. Burke feels so inclined, I see her on, I don't know if she's prepared to address, but look, love the feedback.
I'll defer to, to Jennifer, other than to say lot 8443 is, I believe, owned by a trust, which is controlled by the Canepa family. But, but aside from that, I'll, I'll defer to Jennifer.
Ms. Burke, and thank you, by the way.
Thank you. Thanks for considering this ordinance this evening. Just a couple of things maybe to clarify or to give you some history. So Counselor Rushton is correct, this started with a conversation that Tommy Dutton and I had with the property owner at the corner of Pleasant Street and Elm Street regarding the property that I'm sure we all know has been vacant for several years, has had potential for development, but has had things fall through over, you know, many years because of the inability to actually do what people want to do there, whether it be a Five Guys or a hotel or a bank or a different kind of restaurant. Because that property is owned half gateway and half industrial, and none of those things are allowed in that, just those districts. So in order to make that a viable commercial property, the goal was to rezone that as business. And then in, when I was doing that research and looking at that whole area, all those businesses along that stretch from Elm Street to Route 24 are business uses, but are industrially zoned. So they are all pre-existing non-conforming. Now, I believe there's a history, and I'm not quite sure of the exact history, that they were previously conforming and then at some point became non-conforming. So in effect, we are bringing them back to conforming, particularly on the Home Depot side of the, of the street. But to give you an example, when Ron Emma came before the planning board to convert the bridge, Old Bridgewater Savings Bank building that he purchased into his new breakfast restaurant, he needed to get a special permit from the planning board because that is not a use that's allowed by right. However, it's right next to another existing restaurant. So in order to make that a more seamless transition, we felt that that whole corridor should be a business corridor. It makes sense right off the highway when people are coming off the highway, they want to grab a coffee, they want to grab, you know, a quick lunch, they want to do their banking, get gas, whatever it may be. So that's why we considered those options. So that's sort of the history of where we, we got to where we are today. The lot 84, map 84, lot 43, the one in question about the split zoning, currently today is split zoned. It is currently half industrial portion residential. So whether or not they're aware of it, it already exists that way. I can't speak for the property owner. That property owner, we did send out letters to every property owner that would be affected by this change. We heard from two people. That property owner was one of them and he was, he spoke with Mr. Dutton, but I believe he was very supportive of the change and wanted us to, to do, go forward with this and had no issues making that change. So I think he would be supportive of changing the property to business. It's already split zone, so I don't think it's going to affect him in any way to keep it the split zone. I was unaware of any additional conversations between Mr. Colombo and Mr. Driscoll until late this afternoon. So I don't, I'm not privy to that conversation or what those may be, so I can't speak to those changes.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Burke. So as it stands right now, we have a motion to send back to the Economic Development Economic Committee.
In planning, in planning the joint.
And planning, excuse me. Any other discussion on that?
Was that seconded? I, I'm not sure.
It was.
Okay.
And, and I'm correct, right? Was it seconded?
That's correct.
Yep.
So.
I have Mr. Chase as seconding that motion.
So if I can, if I can just take a brief period here. So the, yes, so Ms. Burke is, is good in her, you know, in her assessment of the meeting, we've described what happened at the meeting, that the segment is residential as it is. I, I don't know what the additional problems are, so that to me, it makes most sense to go back. There were no other comments, as I recall, from anyone during the hearing itself. No one speaking in favor or against, including the property owners. There were no neighbors that came out and spoke against it. So I thought the resolution that we had come to with the amendment was, was a good one. So I think that by sending it back, let's just have those additional conversations that need to happen to make sure that the amendment is fine, that to make sure that the zoning is good and to be, make sure that when it comes back here, that we're not a split vote. Because the risk of having a split vote on the council is if it fails, then the, the planning board actually did not recommend it, and, and that's the language I want to talk to, to our town attorney outside this meeting about. They did not recommend it. So because it failed, that would mean that we couldn't do it, making changes for six months or, or thereabouts, if I recall the law correctly. So I want to make sure it goes through correctly and that it has the full support of everybody involved.
Give me one second, Mr. Colombo. Mr. Rollins, I just want to reiterate this. So if we do vote to send it back to committee and it comes back to us without any substantial changes, we do have the ability at our next meeting to move forward as amended and approved, again, with no substantial changes, correct?
I think if you vote to send it back to both planning and your subcommittee for hearing, then they have the opportunity at that time to make whatever changes, substantial or otherwise, and have it come back for your vote. If you don't send it back and changes are made at your level, then it would have to be sent back anyway. So that, that was my point. So by sending it back, you're actually heading off that possibility of you guys making an amendment and needing to send it back.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Colombo.
I'd just like to make one point. I recall someone at the joint meeting on Wednesday brought up the question as to whether a butter was, were notified of zoning changes. And our Community Economic Development Director pointed out that the lot does not require notifications of a butter. So that's one point to consider, that there's a decent chance that residents of Old Pleasant Street, for example, had no idea that this zoning change was, was going to affect. So another argument for proceeding, we can wait two weeks.
And, and yeah, I, I, I'm not unsympathetic, but if we're following the process, we're following the process. Any other discussion? Okay, so we're, we're voting to send back to committee, and this requires a roll call vote.
Before I call the roll, can I please clarify your motion? The motion that, that I'm calling the roll for is to move it back to the planning board and the Community and Economic Development Committee. Is the intention to hold another hearing or is the intention, is that the intention? Because that's, I want to make sure we have the process right.
That should, that should be the intention, yes.
Yes, that was, that was my intention, Ian.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
No.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Suzan.
Yes.
Mr. Colombo.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Okay, moving on to item N, new business. Ordinance D F Y 21 dash 004, general ordinance, amend section three, council meetings of the council. Rules and procedures. I'll attain a, well, let me, let me just take a step back. Usually this goes to rules and procedures. So we can keep it at the council level and then come back to our next meeting? Or do we, we can move it to committee? Personally, I'd like to keep it at the committee level for the dates, but I, I'm kind of open either way. Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yeah. I'm okay with, I'm okay with whichever way this one goes, but I think you, this, this ordinance brings up something we have to do as a council in general, which is to rewrite our rules and procedures. That I think there's a whole bunch that's outdated, changed, et cetera, et cetera. And we should look into that as a, as a bigger project as well.
Okay. Mr. Wood.
Mr. Fitzgibbons probably doesn't recall, I introduced that last year to go through that exercise. But this is, this is, um, this is probably best to keep at the, at the level. The council president and I spoke about this a while ago. This is, the general concept is that we should not be meeting more than three hours without taking action to say that we can meet more than three hours. And since we've been voting, I mean, since we've been meeting recently at seven and the rules and procedures says 10:30, then we would have a three and a half meeting potentially. So back when we came up with the concept of 10:30, it was intended to be three hours. So this language just simplifies that. I don't, I don't see any reason why it needs to go to rules and procedures, and I would vote in favor of keeping it at the council level.
Mr. George, going to personal privilege since Mr. Wood mentioned me. The first time I remember, the next time I remember what Mr. Wood introduced will be the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any other discussion? I will entertain a motion to bring this back to our next scheduled meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote.
Before I call the roll, I'm sorry. This is an ordinance, and so it will need to be advertised before you can vote this.
Motion to send to advertising.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colombo.
Yeah.
Mr. Suzan.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Hey, order O F Y 21 dash 024, waive annual licensing fee 2021. I'll attain a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Moved.
Got to move in a second. Any discussions?
Mr. President, and I will defer to Mr. Rushton afterwards, it's where the co-sponsors. Again, this is just trying to help local businesses with all of the stuff they've been going through with COVID. And that's the intent, no other licensing requirements will be waived, and it's only for one year. Thank you.
Mr. Rushton, anything to add?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just add that the intent of this obviously is to counsel Fitzgibbons' point is to help small businesses. I've had talked to a number of owners on Broad and Spring Street and different areas in town. And this would be a significant help to them if they could get a pass on these fees and licenses.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Loesch.
Threw you to the town council, didn't we try this similarly in the summer and we weren't able to do it because of timing? Can you help me understand?
That was the, that related to the meals tax, if you recall. And the way that the D R R collects meals tax, the timing in which we would have had to implement that to actually not collect the meals tax and turn them over to the D R R was not going to work. So that's, that's what that had to do with, not the licensing fees.
Perfect.
That was my stupid idea, but anyway.
No, it was a good idea, it was just, I think the timing was a little off.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chase.
I think it would be useful if we could determine, at least in a ballpark, what the aggregate loss of revenue to the town would equal in, in the event that this were, this order were adopted by the council.
I, I will venture to guess that our finance director will know it to the penny. But Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mr. George, great question, Mr. Chase. And I did ask our finance director, and he didn't give it to me to the penny, though I'm sure he could have. It was roughly about $60,000 that this would forego, so it's not, it's not going to break any, any banks, hopefully. So just to let you know, but I'm sure that they'll vet it out in the budget and finance and finance committees.
Right.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Suzan.
Yes.
Mr. Colombo. Mr. Colombo. Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Order, okay, moving on to order O F Y 21 dash 025. F Y 2021 classification tax allocation, adoption of residential factor. Mr. Dutton, can you just give us a brief overview on this, please? You're on, you're on mute.
Sorry, this, this order sets the, what's referred to as the residential allocation. And that is set at one, which means that all industrial, commercial and residential properties are taxed at a single rate rather than having a split rate. So as we have recommended over the past number of years, the town does not have a large enough commercial base in order to shift additional burden to the, to the commercial tax base. So that it makes any sense. So, so this would, this allocation, if it were passed by the council after a hearing, would, would share the, the tax rate across the board. The same tax rate across the board.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton?
I'll, I'll ask one, Mr. President. So generally, towns around us who have a split tax rate, their, their taxes on businesses would be higher than what we would be charging them for the same valuation, right, Mr. Dutton?
Absolutely, substantially higher in many cases.
We're a better value for local businesses, everyone moved here, right?
That's the argument that we make with local businesses.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So, and for clarification, I'm referring it to committee first, correct, on the vote?
Yeah, that's, that's the only vote, really, is just to carry it out to committee.
Okay, so I'll attain a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Moved.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Do we need to set a hearing date as well?
I think we do that after the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All righty, requires a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colombo.
Yeah.
Mr. Suzan.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All right, Anne, if you could schedule a hearing for December first, twenty twenty?
I'll be happy to, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero two, town council meeting dates twenty twenty-one. Um, obviously, we go through this every year around this time um, to establish our council dates. This does, um, this has been referred to the rules and procedures committee in the past. It does not have to, it could stay at our level. Um, I would entertain a discussion to see in which direction people would like to go. If there's any preference.
Right. If, if I might, Mr. President, and this is ju, this is just me, again, being um perhaps playing the role, role of Mr. Wood sometimes. I believe we say we have to set our um, meeting dates by ordinance, don't we? And I, I, I don't know that it's by resolution, but I'm, I'm finding either way, keeping it at the council level or not. I just want to make sure we're following the right process, so we have the right outcome.
I, my understanding is it's, it's resolution, um. Mr. Rollins, any input on that?
Uh, because you guys change it frequently, I think the past practice has been to do it by resolution. Um, because it is like a yearly thing as opposed to doing it by ordinance on a yearly basis.
And I'm good.
I, I think you can probably do it either way, to be honest, even though a resolution has no teeth. You, you all are just setting meeting dates, so it, it's not really something we have to worry about. Um, particular enforcement mechanisms, I hope. Um, so I, I think, I think we're fine doing it by resolution, frankly.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd make a motion to keep it to the council level then.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, so a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, so, hmm, Mr. Fitzgibbons, is the motion to bring it up to our next scheduled meeting?
Yeah, this will be the first reading. We can bring it up uh, at a second reading appropriately. I don't think we could bring it up if our next meeting was next week, but at our, if it's two weeks out, we can do it.
Which I believe is the case.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Suzza.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodes.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All right, moving on to resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero three. F Y twenty-two budget resolution. This is sponsored by Counselor Wood. Mr. Wood, would you like to add anything?
Yes, uh, if I could introduce this, uh, the very, very brief history. Um, I, I first brought the budget resolution function into the council very early, I think two thousand and eleven or twelve is probably one of the first ones. Over the years, it's evolved. Um, originally, it was, it was very uh, rigid in terms of, you know, eighty-five percent rolls, et cetera. And then it became a little more flexible and um, working with the, the finance director. Um, then, you know, when, when um, the finance director first started, we started changing the language a little bit. So one of the um, one of the reasons I left the um, if you read, read it, it says the section to be provided by suggested amendments by the finance committee is we really need to look at the, to the finance committee to do more proactive um, policy suggestions. And, and this is a key area in budget resolution where they can, they can be very effective. So unlike the council, uh, the charter says that the finance committee can look at um, any, any record of the town, finance, financial record of the town. Whereas the council is, is limited to that. So, so I, I think we can expect them to come up with a, a good, um, I, I think it's fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-two. Um, uh, suggested amendment to kind of drive our, our notion of how next year's budget should be formed. And so that's why I didn't want to impose any, any of my usual pieces um, on it, just to give them a clean slate to start with. So my suggestion is that we move it to the um, finance committee and, and if necessary, to the budget and finance committee as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wood. I'll obtain a motion to re, move to the budget and finance and finance committee?
So moved.
Okay, movement second, any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodes.
Yeah.
Mr. Suzza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero four, early voting location resolution. Mr. Wood, would you like to expand on that?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to congratulate the town clerk and, and her staff for doing a fantastic job during the election. Um, this resolution is just to highlight the fact that it was well-run and the fact that um having it within the, within the building, uh, simplified the process for the town clerk and her staff. Uh, keeping the ballots in the building as, as suggested by the um, by the resolution. Uh, keeps it close to the office where they have uh, secure resources into the state. Make sure that the ballots uh, remain safe, uh, had a great, great workflow. And, and this is just to support that um, really what was probably an informal process to begin with, that the council supports, uh, that the council supports this in the future if needed. Um, and maybe the next election is late, she can do it right at her office, but if she needs the town council chambers, then, then it should be that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to refer to the rules and procedures committee.
So moved.
Second.
Movement a second, any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodes.
Yeah.
Mr. Suzza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens who would like to make a comment? Again, I asked for three minutes and uh, is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Anne, I don't see anyone, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Moving on to council comments, I'll start with Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things tonight, and I again, um want to thank the eighty percent or so approximate number of voters that voted in the uh, presidential election over this past month. Uh, I think we were close to eighty percent, maybe a little bit more. Um, and the town clerk and her staff and of, of volunteers and everyone else that got involved in helping out, making it a smooth a smooth period of time, particularly on uh, November third, which was a very long day, I'm sure for everybody, from my understanding, from not reading any negative stories, everything went smooth. Our votes were counted and that's all that really mattered. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. I know a few of us are going to meet uh, briefly at the common and then some of us are going to go down to the senior center for help them um, uh, recognize some of the veterans. Um, just hope everybody takes the time. This would have been our year to host the tri-town uh, Veterans Day parade between East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater and Bridgewater. Unfortunately, due to COVID nineteen and, and, and all that's going on, um there, there are no parades, there are no major ceremonies. Um, just hope that everybody takes the time to do what they can to recognize uh, any and all veterans that they know. Um, and we'll see you back here in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch.
Yes, I'd like to echo uh, Counselor uh, Gallagher's message around uh, Veterans Day and the smooth election. Thank you to the town clerk and all the volunteers that came out, uh, as well as public safety and the town manager's office to ensure that um, all of uh, everything was in place for election day. Um, and unfortunately, in my new role, I don't get Veterans Day offs, I won't be able to participate um, in the celebrations and acknowledgement of the veterans, but do want to um, to uh, thank the counselors for, for doing that and, and make sure that we are still acknowledging the day, though the parade is canceled.
Thank you, Mrs. Loesch. Mr. Chase?
Uh, no, nothing to add, but I certainly echo the comments uh, that have already been delivered by the counselors.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, thank you, just a couple of things. Um, yes, uh, once again, thank you to our veterans. Um, uh, they, as you drive around the common, you'll notice that there's no damage to the common. And uh, that was my concern when we put the blocks out uh, in front of the, in front of the memorial um, that's out there. And uh, you know, I know Veterans Day isn't about that, but it made me think of the, of the, of the monuments and um uh, you know, the blocks are there to protect our, our historical monuments and um, eventually they'll get replaced with something that looks much better. But um, it, it's just, you know, the common can be a dangerous place and uh, you know, the most recent uh, damage is evident of that. Um, uh, COVID nineteen really wasn't talked about tonight, but everybody needs to be vigilant with masks and, and the other actions being recommended. You know, I, we have friends with uh, kids in college and my, my kids in college still. Um, and, and everybody's changing course, um, you know, sending kids home early, closing down campuses. Um, you know, Bridgewater, I think, has been very lucky so far. Uh, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, we read, we read what's happening on campus at B S U and it's a, it's a, it looks like it's a very light infection rate compared to some other campuses, um, around ten, it looks like, but that could change overnight. And uh, so just please remember to, to, to follow the guidelines uh, from the state. Um, the, the last piece is uh, some good news. Um, uh, while unfortunately, the business association had to cancel Christmas on the common, the Lions will set up the decorations here in a couple of weeks. It's always the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so, so look for those to go up. Um, and hopefully that brightens uh, spirits uh, in the, in the coming few, uh, few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rushton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try to be brief in saying that I certainly support um, all of the comments made by the counselors in regards to the election. Um, I would say that, you know, despite the national election being behind us at this point, I hope as a town, we don't continue, uh, just don't stop our work on uh, diversity and equity issues in the town of Bridgewater. Um, those issues still are popping up in the school and in town. Um, so I hope that we continue to work on that and make it goals for the town in the future, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. As far as veterans, I'd like to just thank the veterans that are sitting on our town council. Um, the veterans that are in the town of Bridgewater and the other eighteen million veterans across the United States. Thank you very much for your service. And uh, I'll be thinking about that service uh, all day tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Suzza?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I did a little volunteering at the early voting and on election day. And I was quite surprised by a number of people who think that every single person there is on the budget and being paid for. And when they're told that they're volunteers, they're shocked that that many people came out to help. And all these people on the council recognizing that fact tonight, we really appreciate you recognizing those people who really volunteered. As far as Veterans Day, I am one of those veterans and I stand side by side with my brothers and sisters and celebrating the ceremony tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colin Bodes?
I would just like to echo what, what's been said so far. Thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, this week's always a good one for me because uh, my brother's birthday is on the ninth and he, uh, he's a Marine. Uh, which reminds me that today is the Marine Corps' birthday, too. So to everyone in Bridgewater who's a Marine, happy birthday. And to Mr. Susan, Mr. Gallagher and uh, all of our veterans in town, happy Veterans Day and I couldn't appreciate your service more. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of things, most have been touched upon. First, um to the town clerk and all the volunteers, as Mr. Suzza brought up. Uh, I voted in person. Uh, I was up there around quarter of eleven. I was in and out in ten minutes. And by the way, I wasn't the only one there voting. So well, um, well organized, well executed. Uh, people coming in and out, um, from what I could tell with smiles, obviously with masks, it's a little bit tough. Uh, but I, I think the feedback that I got from people that either voted in person, voted in mail, but early voted. Um, it wa, it was just a great job and it was a lot of work and I don't think we can say thank you enough, um, to again, to the town clerk, her staff and all of the volunteers. Um, I think as Mr. Gallagher brought up, the percentage of votes cast, I hope we keep this not only for the national level, but also the state and local level as well. Um, I just want to touch upon, I, I, myself and Mr. Dutton uh, went to the launch of what was called, what is called the reunion project, which is up on the commons. Um, it was, to be honest, a project I wasn't really familiar with until about a week and a half ago. Uh, if you've got the time, making sure that you're safe, as Mr. Wood brings up. Um, while the weather's good, I would ask everyone to go up, walk through all of the pictures, all of the stories. Um, it, it's, it's pretty amazing and some of the people on there I knew, most I didn't. And to just go through and read the stories of where they were versus where they are now, uh, it's, it's pretty incredible and it goes back to the assets that Bridgewater has, a lot of them you can see driving around, but our people are, are great assets. And for everyone that put that together, I, I applaud them and hopefully that will grow so that we do keep a history, um, so that doesn't disappear. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you to um, all of our veterans, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Suzza. Pat, well, veterans, current people, service, uh, serving the country, uh, protecting my family, uh, our community and our country. I don't think we can ever say thank you enough, so I appreciate that. Uh, with that, we do not have executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Suzza.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodes.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.